Tuesday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty one. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Warren Town Council. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the Republic.
Which stands.
One nation. Under God. Liberty.
Justice for all. Thank you. Sandy, you had said that there was nobody in the queue for public comment at that time?
Absolutely. Nobody.
Alrighty. I feel like I really do need to say something in light of the unfortunate situation that is occurring in the town right now. A person or persons has violated our sense of decency and our place of peace and respectfulness and posted some pretty hideous and heinous symbols downtown. And we stand against them. We denounce them. We reject them. This is not who we are. And please be aware that you have been noticed, but you are but the town is watching and the community at large is watching. The East Bay is watching. The police are watching. The citizens are watching. The businesses are watching. If you come here again and try to do this again, you will be seen and you will be held accountable because this is not who we are. We object and oppose and denounce any type of racist hate-filled speech or actions of that nature. And it's been made perfectly clear because the outpouring of disappointment and disgust at these actions has been really pretty overwhelming. And so we stand here united and in peace and together as a community who supports all of their citizens and denounce the type of racist actions that have taken place here. And yeah, that's what I wanted to say.
If I may.
You may, Councilman Kalenda.
On a much lighter note, I just wanted to give a shout out and a congratulation. I'm trying to figure out why I have feedback. I just want to congratulate the Engine Three Fire Department for their celebrating one hundred and seventy-five years. If we weren't in the middle of a pandemic, there would be a very large celebration. So I just wanted to say thank you to not only Engine Three, but the entire Warren Fire Department for their volunteerism and for being first responders and first in the front of the line in this difficult times. And me personally, they obviously are closely connected to my family. So thank you. And thank you, Madam President, for allowing me this time. And obviously, the entire council shares your statements on the issues that have taken place in this community. Not only will we tolerate it, we will not stand for it, and we will prosecute if we're called and held accountable. So thank you. I echo your statements.
Thank you. We have a number of proclamations, resolutions, and a certificate of recognition to get through. As we do every day, we recognize, or every year, we recognize Earth Day. This year it is April twenty-fourth. And we have, in celebration of Earth Day, we have the annual cleanup, which will be on Saturday, April twenty-fourth, starting at nine AM at Pete Seppi Pavilion. Volunteers are welcome. Masks are required. As much as I think this is a great thing, and it feels real good to see everybody out there on this one day a year, really putting the effort in. I hope that the effort will be not as necessary in years going forward if people would just stop littering and stop throwing their garbage all over the place. You know, I would hope that people would always pick up after themselves. And the notion that we need this day to do this is really sort of unfortunate, but I'm glad we're doing it. And it's good to see the community coming together. There will also be on that day a drawing contest that the Warren Conservation Commission is supporting or sponsoring. You draw a picture of your favorite outside spot or activity. You may use any media. You bring your drawing to the Pete Seppi Pavilion at nine AM for display and judging. There are three categories, thirteen to seventeen, eight to twelve, and seven and under. That means none of you in the room right now can participate. So I think that sounds like fun. We do have the resolution. It's in all of our packets. I'm sure we can put this up on the town website that the town of Warren supports this twenty-ninth year of Warren Conservation Commission's Earth Day Celebration activities in Warren and other activities on a statewide, national, and global level. And that we encourage Warren residents to participate in neighborhood cleanups, educational activities, and celebrations connected with Warren's Earth Day Celebration. Here, here. We also have the annual proclamation of Arbor Day. We've been, I'm not going to read the whole thing. Let's see, what's the best parts of this? Warren has been recognized as a true city USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and desires to continue its tree planting practices. I would submit that we should up our tree planting practices and plant even more trees and aim to do better at replacing the canopy that has been coming down in certain places. So yes, in fact, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-one will be Arbor Day in the town of Warren. And we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Thank you. And finally, there's a proclamation, or we are celebrating the proclamation of the fifty-second Annual Municipal Clerks Week. The Office of the Town and City Clerks, this is a time-honored and vital part of local government and exists throughout the world. This was initiated in nineteen sixty-nine by IIMC, sorry if I read that wrong, and endorsed by all its members in the United States and Canada and fifteen other countries. I'll skip to the bottom. That the town and city clerks serve as the Information Center on Functions of Local Government and Community. And whereas Town and City Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of affairs of the office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, province, county, and international professional organizations. Whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the Office of the Town and City Clerks, many of whom are running this and supporting this meeting right here and now. Now therefore, I, Carrie Cronin, Town Council President of the Warren Town of Warren, do recognize the week of May two, twenty twenty-one, through May eight, twenty twenty-one, is Town and City Clerks Week. And further extend appreciation to all Town and City Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And hey, if you feel like picking up the coffee for the clerks in your community, do it. They'll appreciate it. We know we appreciate them. Thank you. Next, let's get to the Certificate of Recognition.
You want a motion to accept them?
Sure. Let's have a motion to accept the proclamations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. And now we have a certificate of recognition for Patrick McMeekin. I will allow Plano Ruli to talk about this gentleman and the great work that he has done for our community.
Thank you, Madam President. Patrick is with us tonight as well. At previous meeting, I shared with you the work product that Patrick had done for us. Getting the feedback, Carrie. Last fall, he created over a hundred different maps that we are using for a number of different scenarios in those areas that are most vulnerable to sea level rise and flooding. We've shared those maps with RIDE. We are sharing them with the state's Chief Resiliency Officer. And they will be a valuable tool for us going forward. So appreciate what Patrick did, and I appreciate the council agreeing to recognize Patrick's efforts with the certificate of appreciation. Patrick, if you wanted to say a few words, you can unmute yourself.
Yeah, sure. Well, thank you all so much for the certificate of recognition. It's very unexpected, but I really do appreciate it. And I think everyone knows I didn't do this work alone. I had a lot of help from my team members, Nate Benataro, Charles Roman, Theresa Kreen, and Amber Neville with University of Rhode Island Coastal Institute. And then, of course, Bob and Kate, you see on the screen, were huge in pushing this project forward. So I think everyone, the whole team deserves recognition. I'll accept the certificate. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thank you, Patrick, very much. Next, we have interviews. There are two positions that are, or three positions that are open that we have no applicants for. That would be one position on the Conservation Commission and two positions on the voluntary historic district committee board of appeals. I expect we will continue to advertise those on our website and possibly in anticipation of other resignations that are coming forward this evening, something in the newspaper. We do have one applicant for the Economic Development Board. It is an alternate position. I don't believe that, no. Clerk Spironi is shaking her head no. So we do have an applicant, Nate Louis Silva, who has a nice application, but considering the fact that he is not here, we cannot interview him. And I would suggest that we hold his application until next month.
I'll make a motion. We continue the interview for the Economic Development Board alternate position till next month's regularly scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Alrighty. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes. We have one, two, three, four, five batches of minutes here to approve. Have the members of the council reviewed and are comfortable with the documents as they exist right now?
I was. I didn't see anything that needs to be corrected.
Alright. Could we get some motions for their acceptance, please?
I'll make them.
Go ahead. March one, twenty twenty-one, first budget workshop.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Right?
Motion to accept the March eighth, twenty twenty-one minutes, second budget workshop minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Next.
Motion to accept the March ninth, twenty twenty-one, regular scheduled minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
Motion to accept the March twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one minutes, special Town Council meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it.
And finally, motion to accept the April first, twenty twenty-one minutes, special Town Council meeting.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we have the consent agenda. These items are listed and don't need to be addressed by the council unless somebody would like to.
I will make a motion. We approve the consent agenda, P one, P two, and P three.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to accept the P one, P two, and P three. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. And next, P four. This is a request for, if it is acceptable to put together P four and P five, they're for the same event, we have a request for a Class F beverage license from Steve Fratato at the Market Street Pub for an event at the Pete Seppi Pavilion on May one, twenty twenty-one. It is a clam bake. And there is also the entertainment license for that same event. Is Mr. Fratato with us? Yes, I see you. Hello. Mr. Fratato, a question or two. Is this in fact a benefit? Is there an organization or a group? Or is this just a, we're so glad to be getting together and having a good time? Either or, fine.
Yeah, it's just a Market Street appreciation. We can't hold, we usually have it once a year. We just can't hold that many people inside right now.
Okay. I think you just froze.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
You can hear it.
So it's just an appreciation for our customers, and we can't hold that many people inside right now, having it outside.
Alrighty. And have all of the necessary police, fire chimed in on this? And has the application for the submitted of the, for approval to the DBR happened?
Yeah, I believe so.
Public plan's been reviewed by the police chief, the fire chief, and myself. And we've approved it, but we have not gotten approval from the DBR.
Okay, so provided that the council approves your Class F and then your entertainment license, you do realize that the final approval comes from the Department of Business Regulation?
Okay.
Make a motion to approve contingent on approval with the Department of Business Regulation.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And so that was for the Class F beverage license, we should clarify. And now we can have a separate one unless anybody on the council has any questions further for Mr. Fratato.
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve a one-day entertainment license for Steve Fratato at the Market Street Pub for the May one, twenty twenty-one event occurring from one to six PM. It's an acoustic two-person. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much for being here, Mr. Fratato. Wish you a successful event, and how nice for you to celebrate your friends and your customers.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good luck, Steve.
Thank you.
There we go. Okay, next we have a request for a yearly entertainment license from the collaborative, Uriah Donnelly. This is for entertainment, live music, and movie screenings. So we've got a bunch of things going here. Why don't we take it chunk by chunk? The first being the concerts in the Town Common. Mister, hi, hello, Uriah Donnelly.
Hi.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, everybody.
You have submitted some dates. Could you just tell us a little bit about how you envision the concerts in the common happening?
I can. I will, if it's okay. My Elwood Donnelly, my father is also here. If Haley could bring him in, because really the concert in the common is his project, and the collaborative is just helping him put it together. So I can certainly say that we support it, and we're going to be working with him. And in some ways, the Art Night versus the Warren, they're also involved with it, putting the concerts together. And I know the idea came from when we did the Take It Outside events over the fall. And, you know, and Elwood, as most people know, has been instrumental on it. And it's been doing music throughout the town for a lot of the events and thought, hey, we're using the, you know, the common for this particular, to have some pop-ups there, and there's music across the street. You know, maybe there's something that we can do to draw, to have something for the community and free concerts. Seem like something that we can do, but I'll let, allow Elwood to speak more to that. That's okay.
That is fine. Good evening, Elwood Donnelly. Welcome.
Hi, thanks for having me.
So could you please talk to us a bit about how you envision this series of events happening? There will be, of course, the oversight by police, fire, and the planner, and then the application for approval to the Department of Business Regulation and spacing and safety considerations.
Right. So as Uriah was talking about during the Warren Walk, Take It Outside, Warren Walkabout events, we had music down on that street and in use of the common too, and the steps of the church. And so I thought it'd be a great place to have intimate concerts once a month in the evenings for community members could bring supper picnic and listen to an intimate concert there on like the third Thursday of each month. June, July, August, September. Is that right, Uriah?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. So anyway, I went out and solicited some grant money and was able to pay for the whole season that way. And then some ready to book some musical events. I understand that someone has offered an alternate position on the concerts there, and I just wanted to say we're not here to offend anyone, whether they be veteran or not veteran, anyone at all. So we don't want to cause a division. We just wanted to offer another opportunity for community events. I mean, I myself am a war veteran, and in fact, also a fire protection specialist in that, during those periods of military. So I'm certainly not here to offend anyone, and we certainly don't want to cause divisions. So that's my take on that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thanks, Elwood. I guess you have clarified one of the questions that I had was that what time of day or night would these activities be taking place? So do you have some time parameters that you were planning?
Yes, we I think we offered them from five to seven, I think.
Yeah, we're looking at that, from five to seven as the whole time period. The music won't be two-hour concert, though. And to speak to what the music will be, it will be amplified, but it won't be live, like a whole band. It's essentially amplifying acoustic instruments and microphones. But again, it'll be duos, musicians, and we're really trying to bring in different voices, you know, different styles of music. And again, it's not like some of the other events the collaborative does that are a little bit more, you know, raucous. This, you know, this is going to be small and intimate, as Elwood had said, and really for families. And it's earlier in the day, as he said.
As a compliment to the concerts held at Burrage Hill Park, which are more bigger bands, and this is more of an intimate setting of folk duos. And the concerts themselves, we were hoping to run them from six to seven fifteen. That's the timeframe that the music can be played. The rest of the time is set up and break.
Okay. Do any members of the council have any questions for either of the Donnellys? BP Hamley?
Yeah, I did get, a few people reached out to me, veterans, and they were a little concerned that it may appear disrespectful. My question is, have you looked at alternative sites right in that area? Like possibly the parking lot near the Miller Street Rescue Station, where during the Christmas celebration, that's where we have a lot of the things going on? Have you looked into any alternative sites other than common?
No, when we started, when I was booking the music for the events this past summer fall, that's when I got the idea that it might be sweet to have them on the common. Now, I wouldn't, hadn't asked, maybe some of you know what are the official uses or accepted uses of the common? I mean, I thought it was because it was the common that it was, you know.
I don't think we have an official policy on it.
Yeah.
It's the Town Common, but there are two, there are Walmart memorials and a fireman's memorial there.
Well, and Madam President, if I may, you know you something, Mr. Donnelly. You bring up a very excellent point. And so what I'm thinking of, what does our nation's capital do with their war memorials? They have memorials there, including police, fire, every war that the United States has participated in. And to my understanding, I don't believe they use those areas for entertainment of this nature. So I understand where you're coming from. I really do, because it's located into the downtown area. I'm just wondering if there would be better use for this event in another place of town that would serve the same purpose. So maybe we can hash that out this evening, hopefully. But I just got done reading the letter that was sent to us through our clerk. And they have some, I understand your service, and thank you for your service, and I also have service. But if this isn't the appropriate location, we probably should make sure we do our due diligence that if we do decide to land here, that we explored every other avenues. Warren's small enough where we can get around with foot traffic. So that's all I have, Madam President.
Uriah?
I guess, hi, I guess my question is, that I'm unclear about is how, in what ways it's disrespectful? And maybe I just don't understand, you know.
Well, it's a memorial. It's supposed to be a solemn place, you know? It's not supposed to be bustling with people singing and dancing and, you know, and doing things like that. That's the way I look at it. I don't know, and I can't speak for anybody else, because I don't know anybody else's opinion. But that's the way I look at it.
Well, Madam President, if I may.
No, Councilman Kalenda, Councilman Peckard has his hand up. I'll let him speak before you speak again.
Thank you, Madam President. I have the same question that Uriah has, which is, in what way is it disrespectful? It is the Town Common. It's not the war memorial. It's always been a Town Common. The Town Common is a place for people to get together. I think if they were doing something that was truly disrespectful, I would oppose it. But I mean, this is, you know, a very small intimate concert. I, you know, I think war veterans would probably applaud the use of the common for the people. That's kind of what they were fighting for, in a sense. I mean, so I don't know. I don't get the disrespectful part. I really don't. And, you know, I respect my fellow council people, opinions, but I just don't quite understand how it's disrespectful. It's not a rock concert. It's not going to be people drinking out there by all any means. It's going to be very small, intimate, and kind of what the Town Common and the people's public spaces for. I mean, that's the way I look at it. So that's my comment.
Adam Sheer.
Councilman DePascua, you can speak now.
I'd like us all to think about one pretty big fact. We have a baseball diamond. We have a band shell. We have a town beach, a cemetery. We've been given, probably rather reluctantly, permission to do what has been done there. If we look back in time, unfortunately, the graves were actually thrown around. I mean, the bones and
thrown around. The, I mean, the, the, the bones and, and, and the remains of the Indians were actually discarded as refuse at what we call now Burris Hill Park. So as we want to discuss what's proper and not on hallowed ground, let's just all keep that in mind. That is not what is being decided here. But the reason I bring that up is because so many people have so many opinions on something that hasn't even happened yet, that may or may not be disrespectful. I don't think anyone here would intentionally disrespect anyone or anything in regards to offending anyone, especially when you think of how, uh, Ms. Cronin started the evening with the horrible stickers that were put around town. So think about that before we think about a more appropriate place, i.e. the band shell. Uh, I think that this should be something that could be done in a, uh, let's see how it goes atmosphere. I do think, and I would like to ask, Elwood, do you believe that the music you're planning on having there would complement the area?
I'm trying to make a point that it does. Um, the, the musicians that I'm seeking out are diverse, for one thing, and also small in number, um, and acoustic, for a third point. Um, you know, a whole, my whole concept of this was the for, because of the common at being that small, nice intimate space to create a small intimate concert setting for people to bring picnic suppers. Um, nothing beyond and nothing loud and boisterous, you know, nothing offensive. Um, but as I say, um, I don't want, I'm not here to divide the community or cause any trouble in the community. You know, if there's, if there's some adverse, uh, you know, attention against this, then it's not, it's not my intention. So I'll go with the decision of the board.
The location would be on the north side, the grass that used to have rocks.
Yeah, with it back to the church.
All right. I mean, for years there were boulders there. That's what we, we had there. So, uh, I, I think that, again, I'm looking at this as of, of, see how it goes without, and, you know, and then, and then make a real position afterwards, whether it's something we'd like or not. That's all I have to say.
Um, Councilman Kalenda's had his hand up and then Uriah, you can speak and then I'll give my opinion.
So, um, Mr. Donnelly, Uriah, um, I wanted to respond to your question. I guess you were asking, you know, who's finding it inappropriate? Well, folks have reached out to me to say that it's not appropriate. So I was just doing a quick little search. And what I can say is this, I've participated in my fair share of memorial services, Memorial Day parades and Fourth of July parades and Labor Day parades and other festivity parades. Each event has a separate, uh, connotation that goes along with it. And a Memorial Day parade is much different than a Fourth of July parade. So the point that I'm trying to make is not that this isn't a location where you can have it, is it really appropriate to have it at an area that is designated as a memorial? My fellow Councilman Joe De Pasquale, I hear you loud and clear about, you know, the park, the Burris Hill Park and the Native Americans that are buried there. But we do have other locations in the community that could be better suited that, you know, you've said your own words, Elwood, you don't want to divide the community. I see a little bit of a division here. Some of our war veterans are not pleased with this event occurring here. So I am only bringing forth their position that they have reached out to me. And I've made my points pretty clear that an area for memorial is, is just that. It's a memorial location. So thank you, Madam President.
Uriah, did you want to say one more thing?
Yeah, um, just that, yeah, um, and I, again, I'm with my father on this, you know, we don't want to cause any, any, any problems and, and, um, and, you know, well, we could not do it or do it somewhere else. It's really, this isn't the real issue. It's just that, you know, the plan is to do it there and we, and, and, and so what I'm, what I'm asking, I guess, is, you know, was there any opposition to the, the pop-ups over the fall that were happening in that park or over the years when there's music being played at the church on the steps there and people are walking through there? Like, um, there, I haven't heard of any opposition previous to anything that's happened in and around that park. So, um, I just wonder why it's happening now. I, I guess I know because it's just like taking what's already happened there and making it a little bit bigger, you know? But we had a guy making pizzas in that park in October and November and, you know, and people walking through it. Um, you know, and, and again, I don't know if there was any opposition to that then.
Oh, my speaker's on. Um, thanks, Uriah. Um, my, my sort of, uh, perspective on it all is that, um, yes, I too received an email from a member of the community who spoke in objection to this, um, taking place at the, the town common. I also received, um, an email in support of this happening, um, saying that they felt it's the perfect place for an event of this nature to happen. I, this is our town common. The purpose of the town common originally was a place for the members of the public to gather, to, um, have public meetings, to have public markets, to, um, have, uh, to, to have entertainment. So it seems perfectly in alignment with what the purpose of a town common is. The fact that it was decided, and I think rightfully so, at some point many years ago, to also be the place where we would put our, um, Veterans of War Memorial and our, uh, um, Fallen Firefighter, um, Memorial is, 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 just represents that, you know, we choose, we, we chose at, at one time to place these places of memorial in the town common where people would be most likely to see them and pass them by and be able to remember their family members and their citizens and, and have the opportunity to pay their respects on a regular basis. I walk through the town common all the time and there are regularly families, um, children, dogs, young, old alike, having picnics, enjoying the, 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 um, green, the trees, the grass. Um, sometimes they have like a little boombox and they're listening to music. I, I've never heard or felt this sort of pushback and this argument that it was in some way disrespectful to the, um, to the Veterans War Memorial or to the, the fallen firemen. I, I just don't see the connection to that feeling. And I hear it now. I, I wasn't aware that anybody had felt that way before. I'm curious as to why there's never been any pushback or, or outcry in the past. And, um, I personally am in support of this. I, I think it's a perfect use of the, um, of this space in our town that is public, that is our town common. Um, and provided that the, uh, the application to the DVR for COVID safety purposes is, is accepted, um, which I don't see why it would not be, given the fact that we've held other events during time of COVID that have been approved for, for that place. I'm, I'm in support of it. I, I feel comfortable, um, in, in my opinion and my, my vote of support for it and would be happy to continue the conversation outside of this venue with anybody who disagrees. Um, but I, I think we probably have covered all the bases. Do we have a motion to support or what would the next, the next step be here to approve this contingent upon approval by the DVR?
I have a question for the senator.
Yes.
Mr. De Sisto?
Yeah.
Oh, and Mr. Farrar, I'm sorry. I just, um, or both of you, actually. Earlier was asked, is there a definition, uh, for the common? I believe there is, isn't there on the books? When we, uh, looked back at placing the flags for the permanent flags for the fireman's memorial, I believe there is an actual definition. Isn't there?
Not, not in the, not in the, uh, Warren code, no.
Interesting.
What would be required, uh, is to take a look at the land evidence records and get a description of it, uh, in that fashion. It's not, it's not contained in the code of the charter.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, do we have a motion to approve this event or a motion to deny? I'm not hearing either.
Can we? I, I, I will motion to, um, to approve the, uh, application for an entertainment license for the concerts on the Common, June seventeen, July fifteen, August nineteen, and September sixteen, uh, contingent upon the DVR license being approved.
I will second that. Do we have further discussion? Councilman De Pasquale, you seem troubled.
Uh, no, I just had a little indigestion. Um, I, I would like to, um, have discussion in regards to, uh, Elwood's position as well as Uriah's position, that they both stated that they do not want this to be a, uh, a concert of division or an action of division. And I think that we should, uh, include in this motion that it's approved based on their performance and acceptance of the community. I mean, I, I think that that would speak volumes. I don't think that you're looking to do anything, as you said, it's like you're skin in the game, you're making a big play over this. So I, I, I would like, I would like, um, I don't know how to actually say, I would like the people that are in opposition to actually think about the, um, extra eyes that are going to be on the Common, the people who would be there in the company of the church. Uh, it's such a nice setting to have all the potential visitors, uh, see the youth as, um, a very, uh, proper use. So I think we should, uh, look at it and say that based on the performance there, um, and maybe this would give the, the opposition a better feeling that we're not just giving a, a blank check here. We're, we're, we're actually saying, um, at least I'm saying, uh, based on how it goes, I think you guys should be able to do it. I don't even know if that made sense.
How about, how about, um, adding to the, the motion that in the spirit of, uh, goodwill towards all people of the community and in celebration of the, um, community spirit that exists in the town of Warren and in an effort not to exclude anyone, we approve this, um, series of events. And, um, we could even put a, uh, caveat that if there is any type of, um, uh, uh, unexpected, uh, negative, uh, anything that would ha, might happen at the event, that we could come back the, the following month and reconsider the, the, uh,
Yeah, that's, in other words, yeah, if, you know, this, I'd like, yeah, I mean, I think there's no substantive experience. And if this proves to be something that is worthy, I think it should be given the opportunity. So there should be a, you know, you should, I, I think they should have the opportunity.
Councilman Peckard?
I, I think that goes without saying. If there's an issue and we can revisit this thing, we have every right as a council to go back in and, and, and revisit this thing. That goes without saying. So my motion stands. I think, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable approving it. And, and as, uh, Councilman De Pasquale said, maybe not see how it goes, but we will certainly be cognizant of that, that, that we need to keep our eyes on it and make sure that it's, it is respectful and that isn't causing any, uh, consternation here. I, that's, that's, I think, a given.
All right. So we have a motion and we have a second. We've had discussion. Um, we can vote now, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose this.
So we have a three, two. Um, Sandy, do you have that?
You're muted, Sandy.
Councilman, um, Vice President Hamley and Councilman Kalender Nay.
Yes. All right. Thank you. All right. So next we have, um, the drive-in at thirty Cutler Street. There is a series of, um, movies scheduled to happen. This is an annual event. Will this be the second annual event or did you do this pre-COVID? I forget.
This is the, the second annual and, you know, we did it in response to COVID.
Okay. This, so we have May twenty first, May twenty eighth, June eleventh, June twenty fifth, July ninth, July twenty third, and August thirteenth at sundown, I take it?
Correct.
I will make a motion to improve, to approve the, uh, drive-ins at thirty Cutler Street on May twenty one, May twenty eight, June eleven, June twenty five, July nine, July twenty three, and August thirteen, all of twenty twenty one.
A second.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. And finally, we have the, um, what number, annual Folks Fest?
Hard to know, but it's the, it's the fifth.
Okay. So the fifth annual Warren Folks Fest, um, that will happen on August twenty eighth between the hours of?
One to eight.
One PM to eight PM?
Correct.
Okay. And, um, this will be music and entertainment and, uh, food and all of that full draw, um, are all?
What's the venue for this?
That's at thirty Cutler.
At thirty Cutler, okay.
What other, in, in the past, what other, uh, what has your application looked like as far as the, all of the, uh, the bells and whistles with the food and the entertainment and the, the alcohol?
Yep, we, um, it's always been, uh, yeah, live music. Um, there's an art festival element to it. We have about thirty-five art vendors and then there's food vendors and restaurants from Warren. Um, and we usually have, um, Narragansett Beer or some beer sponsor, um, there as well. Um, and, and yeah, I mean, we use the whole, the whole back lot there at thirty Cutler, the whole space. Um, and we'll be spreading out even more this year, um, for safety. And, um, and yeah, so that's usually what we do. Same thing. We're not, we're not changing anything this year, keeping it simple.
I will make a motion to approve the Warren Folks Fest on August twenty eighth, twenty twenty one at thirty Cutler Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. All righty. Um, next we have correspondence. And I have just been advised that I am having feedback. May, I don't know if it would help if everybody turns their microphones off unless you're speaking. If, if it's coming for me, if you have your mic off, maybe you won't hear it. Um, I don't, I don't know what to do about it. I'm, I'm not the tech wizard. So, um, we have, uh, seven items on the.
I think Uriah is trying to get your attention.
Mr. Donnelly, yes?
Hi, sorry. Um, I just, I saw on there that, um, that was for the entertainment license. We also had applied for the liquor license for the Folks Fest. Um, but I didn't see it on there. I just, it's not till August, so there's time, but we did, we did put the applicant, it's a, it was a carryover application for last year.
I'm sorry, excuse me, Carrie. That goes through the town clerk's office and it gets approved, approved through all the department heads.
So we still have, and, and those approvals are forthcoming?
They're actually, one of the things that it goes to the clerk's office, gets approved by all the department heads. So it doesn't have to go back because it's something, it's an annual thing.
Yeah, great, great.
You're all good. I thought you were going to offer tech advice.
Oh, no. No.
All right. Thanks, Uriah. Turn off your microphone. All righty, so back to correspondence. There are seven items here. Is there anything anybody would like to pull or discuss?
Yeah, I'd like to send a letter of recognition, appreciation to Jane Millen for her time served on the planning board. It would be C six.
All righty. And if we are doing so, we can include the letter, the resigning member of the Economic Development Board, Leonora Valvo as well.
I didn't see her on there. Oh, yeah, sorry.
D five.
Thank you. It was not intentional.
Yep, so we have a motion then and a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All righty, and I would just like to point out the rather sort of significant numbers that Warren is seeing in meals revenue tax. It's pretty impressive. We have the greatest year-over-year increase in meals tax revenue at thirteen point two percent increase. It's a twenty-five thousand dollar difference year-over-year. It's pretty great. That means that our little restaurants in town are working hard, bringing in the revenue and keeping their heads above water. So we really appreciate it. It means a lot. And get out and spend your money in our local establishments. Oh, I'm the culprit. I'm gonna have to mute myself. You all love that. Well, I'm still talking. Old business, OB one, discussion in action regarding the extension and/or amendment of the town's declaration of state of emergency. And I will keep talking here and apologies for my feedback, but I know that we were sort of looking forward not to not extend this, but perhaps the solicitor can back me up on this, Mr. De Sisto, that there are issues with the, with lifting the state of emergency and the grace that our business, our small businesses, our restaurants are enjoying in being able to do the outdoor dining at a greater capacity. And if we lift the state of emergency, it could impact that. And it would be my recommendation to extend when the, the state of emergency for a month and give those businesses who would need to apply for different zoning, the time to do so, so they are not negatively impacted. And I will mute myself and let Solicitor De Sisto explain that in a more accurate way.
Yeah, you know, I, I gotta tell you, I've been going back and forth on this for the last several months, but I, I have a concern and it stems from two pieces of legislation that I see in the General Assembly. H six one one nine by Representative McEntee and the companion bill is S six five four by Senator DiMario. What those bills would do is enact a one-year moratorium on the enforcement of zoning and other municipal regulations on restaurants that have made changes to accommodate these emergency orders that were brought on by the pandemic. And by the way, they've been relaxed but still in force. I understand that there is opposition to these bills feel that there's some unintended consequences in them, in them. But it raises the question as to those establishments in the town that were allowed to make changes to their business and an investment in their business to accommodate the restrictions and that still have them in place. Those suspensions of the ordinances and regulations were due to the fact that you had your emergency orders in effect. I don't know how much longer the, the emergency orders will stay in effect at the state level now that there's been a change in the administration. The concern that I have is for these businesses out there that there be some legal structure for them to continue on with what they did last season to go forward on this. And also you've got something later on on the agenda that could tie into this. So I, yeah, I understand that, you know, things are winding down. But I'm thinking that you want to keep this in effect for those purposes, for the businesses to allow them to continue on with the warmer weather coming in. Secondly, and also when you get to the taxation issue, that's a little bit later on in your agenda. If you have any questions, be happy to answer them.
Mr. Hanley?
Uh, yes, Anthony, couldn't we do the same thing with a vote of a council? Extend the zoning relief? Rather than just, rather than just secede all of our control as a council and go back to this, stay with this declaration of emergency? Why can't we vote to do that?
If, if you wanted to, to take the, the zoning example, really what you'd have to do is, is go through the process. It'd have to be an ordinance introduced, it'd have to go to the planning board. It'd have to come back for a public hearing. I'm not one that recommends that you have zoning amendments that are sunsetted. I don't, don't think that's good practice. So it seems to me that, you know, the, the emergency declaration has the utilities for this and perhaps the other one too. If you want to limit it to that, you might want, want to do it. But I, I just think for these businesses, so there's a legal structure in place and, and it'll, it'll make it so that there's not a threat of litigation for, for what they're doing to keep their businesses going. That's all.
But with the state's declaration of emergency, doesn't that give us the power to do it without going through that whole rigmarole of changing the zoning ordinance?
Yeah, I, I gotta tell you, I don't, I don't know if the, I don't know how much longer the state's emergency regulations are going to stay in effect. And I think that's one of the reasons why those two bills were put in. And they've had their hearings, but they're not going to pass till the end of June. It probably won't be enacted and signed by the governor until July. That, that's why I'm making the recommendation. I understand and, you know, it's right at the end of things and everything's getting relaxed, but I'm just concerned about those businesses and that there be some type of a legal structure to allow them to continue on what they did the last year. That's all.
So if we were to extend for another month and then reach out to all, all of those businesses who have been taking advantage in particular of this zoning relief and help them get their, their their business in order and either help them apply or, you know, work with them to continue doing, doing business as they have been or amend their business in such a way. We could give ourselves a month to do that and not worry about them being vulnerable. I just, this is such a critical time with the weather getting better. You can just feel people are ready to get outside and get back to, to life. And with vaccinations being up, I, I really would hate to see us causing any unnecessary harm to businesses that have held on for so long. So does, does that make sense?
I'm, I'm, I gotta, I stay up at night because I, I don't know what's going to happen at the state level. And I, I don't know what's going to happen with the legis, the two pieces of legislation that I, I just referred to. And I, I just, my, my only concern is, you know, you have a business that's expecting that they're going to be able to do what they did last year to tide them through until this thing is finally over. And, you know, the legal framework for them is not there. And that could subject them to a lawsuit. That, that's, and i- am I being overly cautious? Yes. Is that what I usually do? Yes. I just, I worry about it, that's all. And I, I could be wrong, that the state could keep these, you know, their emergency orders in effect, which allow for this. These, these bills could pass through, they could. And then this isn't needed. It could happen, but, you know, I, I, my concern is, is that doesn't happen. And, you know, some business out in Warren's left holding the bag. That's what I worry about.
Councilman Heckard?
I, I was ready to vote no on this, but taking what I'm hearing into consideration, it does seem like the, the prudent thing would be to yes, extend this another month, but be prepared next month to take action so that we don't have to do this again. And I, I think that might be the best, the best way forward.
I'm confused. What would be the reasoning for not maintaining this position?
Is that a question to me?
Yeah, it's a question to everybody. I don't, I don't understand where the hardship, it sounds, what you had actually said we could do is a huge amount of hardship for individual businesses to fill out and, and set up paperwork and, and also we can take control of, of our situation. I, what are we controlling versus continuing along with this?
Joe, in, in a state of emergency, we controlled nothing.
Right.
Nothing.
Right.
The power all belongs to the president in a state of emergency. We controlled nothing.
Right.
And it's heard of my, that's my opposition.
Okay, so in other words, the status quo has served us well.
I, I do, I do think we, again, we should be prepared to take action because this may just disappear as Mr. De Sisto said.
But what action is it that you're, that you're saying we should prepare ourselves for?
For giving some relief for the zoning that's being violated in a sense by these businesses. Somehow we have to do that.
If, if, we need to. On that. If, you know, the legislature takes action, if the governor keeps those orders in place at the state level, then you don't have to vote for this af- after this. But I, I'm worried that in between now and, and then something happens that's not, not in that scenario. This is a belt and suspenders approach.
So if I'm to understand correctly, the, the governor, if the governor continues the state of emergency, our businesses are covered, our state of emergency doesn't, if we remove it, that they still enjoy the privileges that exist with the state state of emergency, correct? And, and if we continue ours for a month because we don't really know whether the governor is going to stick with it or, or get rid of it and the, the bills and the legislature that could provide the businesses relief are sort of in limbo. So this would just be safeguarding for another month. And what would the process be for getting those small businesses? This is maybe more of a question for Mr. Ruley to get them to a place where they would have the right zoning or get some sort of relief from local zoning if we could either call an emergency meeting or get that ball rolling a little more quickly than, than usual.
We could have a special meeting in the town, other than of the zoning board. We would have to get a butters notices out and advertise. So we've got, you know, a two-week lead window for that. But I mean, I think, you know, we could be as expeditious as we needed to be if we knew that this was coming. Manager has her hand up.
Okay, let mute, unmute, I need a clicker. Ms. Michaud, you first, and then Mr. Hanley, you next.
I, I mean, I think that, that we can work as quickly as possible. My concern goes back to what Attorney De Sisto mentioned about the pending legislation and that we, we may be asking restaurants who are already strapped for time to be completing paperwork and attending a meeting. And then the legislature could make that all null and void a week later. So it's, you know, I, I do have a concern about, you know, requiring restaurants to, to complete that volume of work, even if we assist them with it, there is still a considerable burden. And there's a cost associated that we would have to address as well when the legislature could very well take action at any time and, and make it unnecessary.
That's what I was thinking.
Tony, if the, if the governor pulls their declaration of emergency, can we, which, which will put back in full effect the enabling legislation that sets up the zoning ordinances and all, and says exactly whatever he's on, has to do. If we don't have the shelter from that, will our declaration of emergency let us break the state law? You're muted.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. It's not, not a breaking of the state law. As it, as things are in effect today, you can extend this one for the thirty days. If in two weeks, the governor says, look, I'm declaring the state of emergency over this thing, this one will go to the end of, the end of the month that you have on it.
But even though it's a state law that we would, we would be violating the state enabling legislation?
No, this thing continues on.
Okay.
This, this would continue on, but only for the time, this is only a, a one-month order itself. So if there's a, it, it, if it is enacted lawfully at the time that it was voted on, then you're all set.
All right, Manager Michaud makes a good point in that that is a rather onerous proposition to put forward to small businesses who are just trying to keep their, their doors open. If this was, however, something that would be beneficial to them. I know a lot of small businesses have sort of learned a new business in light of the pandemic, you know, ways pivots that were, you know, considered sort of crazy and insane and never in a million years are now kind of the way they do things. And the notion of going back and not doing, and, and doing business the way they used to do business doesn't make sense anymore because they've learned new value to new ways of doing things. So I wonder if the idea of some of these businesses applying for zoning that might better suit their new way of doing business is something that we're going to be seeing anyway? Or applying for relief or permission for, for things that, that they may not have had there not been a pandemic. So I guess my, my thought at this point is to, in light of not knowing what this, the governor is going to do and what the, the legislature is going to do, I would be in favor of just extending this one more month. Did I hear we could focus it exclusively for businesses and remove all of the other parts of it? Would that be a way to go, just to make it exclusive for a certain purpose? And take my sort of all power out of it?
Yes.
Well, let's do that. How, how, could you make that motion, Mr. Hanley? You're muted. I'm gonna mute myself.
So in other words, the declaration of emergency could be just as in support of the businesses relief from zoning restrictions?
And, and other regulations that they've had, yes.
And continue with the regulations they're operating under now?
Yes.
Okay, I, I will make that motion. I'll make the motion that the state of emergency will apply only to the businesses that are operating under the new guidelines to continue operating under the new guidelines for a period of thirty days or until the next regular town council meeting.
Well, this, this goes through May eleventh, by the way.
Okay.
That's the next town council meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, so Mr. De Sisto, do you, this is, you think this is a good way to go? We're not leaving ourselves exposed or anything? We're, we're, we're safe?
It's, it's, it's legal. And I have to tell you, the, the, absent this issue, I would not have recommended that you continue it on based on the fact that things are winding down.
Yeah. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
That's weird, I was, I was silent on that, huh?
Look, we got you. All right, thank you. Next, OB two, discussion in action regarding extending the grace period for payment of quarterly property taxes without penalty or interest. Ms. Michaud, I don't know if you want to speak on this or if Mr. Liedem or Ms. Chan wants to speak on this. This seems to be the right thing to do at the time.
I'm happy to speak on it.
I'm happy to speak on it. It's just the council's policy has been to extend the grace period for 30 days for payment of the quarterly taxes without interest or penalty. And I'd recommend that you do that one more time at least. And, and we have not had significant losses due to this, but it does seem to assist people in having a little extra time to get that payment in.
So move.
Mr. De Sisto?
Just quickly, this is by the way, one of the things that was authorized by the declaration of emergency. However, there is a statute 45 dash 2 dash 3.2 that allows you to do this. So what you're doing, if you approve the motion is legal.
Okay. So we have a motion?
I'll second Joe's motion.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. New business. NB1 is discussion and action regarding policy for board and commissions, appointment, reappointment procedure, member expectations, time commitment, et cetera, and annual training opportunities. I think we probably would all agree that over time, the process and of, of interviewing and appointing new members of boards and commissions has gotten a little bit fuzzy. I think we need to re-identify what the real time commitment is for especially boards and commissions like planning, zoning, and historic district commission. And I think that there needs to be a little bit, a, a new, a new application process, more information shared on our website, and a little bit more sort of thought before we just sort of take that warm body pulse and say, you're in there. Not to say that we have done that specifically, but I just think that this is an area where we can be a little bit more. We could take it up a notch. I'm happy to hear discussion on this, but my intention was that we would direct the manager to develop a list of new policies and, and applications and procedures for this whole process so that we could bring it up to a little bit more professional level. The, the application itself is sort of a blanket application that I don't think really makes sense for every single board and commission. So yeah, that was my point in bringing this forward. Any discussion?
No, I, I think it I, I think it's a good idea. The only concern I would have is, you know how we have so much trouble get, actually getting applicants? I would hate, I don't want to do anything that's going to scare them off too much. So as long as we, you know, we take it up a notch, but not too far that nobody wants to, less people want to apply than do now. That, that would be my only concern.
I, 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 I understand your concern on that. And I, I tend to agree, but the, the alternate is that we don't, we, what we're doing now is really nothing to illuminate for people what the expectation is for these positions. And I did quite a bit of research looking at other communities and, and what they do. And you know, some of them do, do some really good work as far as creating an application that kind of spells out what, what you would be doing as a board member. And I think if people are really scared off by that, then maybe we don't want them anyway. So I don't know. I, I, again, I, I saw, I saw some pretty good work being done in other communities we could use as a model. And I, I think we can adjust it, adjust these things. So not only was it within the application, but, but then once someone was appointed, there was a packet that they were given that would kind of spell out what, again, what they should be attending to. So I, I think it's a about, it could be a valuable tool for us.
Madam President.
Okay, just one moment. I also wanted to reiterate the part about annual training opportunities. I think that some of our board and commission members who've been serving for a year to many years, there, they, they could use some professional development and some, some retraining and some updated opportunity to understand what new either technology or information and, and industry standard is on their various boards and commissions. Just bringing up the level of professionalism on all of those boards. Mr. Col.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah. So this is something that I actually brought up to the council when I first got on back in 2018 about a proper vetting process and a proper application process. So I'm, I'm happy to hear that we're finally moving in that direction. It won't deter an applicant. It'll just let an application or an applicant know, eyes wide open, that this is what they're getting into. So I'm sure we can find some middle ground that'll work well for this community. And I do support this. And it's probably a long overdue. And on the other note about proper professional development, I think as a community, I've spoke to the manager about this, is that we should be looking into the Leadership Rhode Island Program, which exists in this state. It is an excellent program for developing our leaders, our individuals who are department heads, and our fellow members on boards and commissions on participating in something like this. It's, it's a small investment that'll give us rewards for, for decades to come. So that's all I have, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. So could we have a motion to direct the manager to develop a list of policy and procedure and application recommendations for us to bring, bring back at next month's meeting?
I will still move that motion, Madam President.
All right. So we have a motion and we'll consider Councilman Hekker's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. NB2 is discussion and action regarding amendments to the tree ordinance request first reading. So we all received in our packets some new language for the Waring, little spelling there, Waring Tree Ordinance Recommendations. We do not need to get into pulling these apart this evening because we don't have a first reading. But if we could get a motion to have a first reading for this, then we can really pull it apart at next month's meeting. Unless somebody wanted to discuss it further this evening.
Carrie, excuse me? We do have one person. Jenny Flanagan has her hand raised. I'm not sure if you'd like me to allow her to speak. Or?
Ms. Flanagan is welcome to enter the meeting and speak.
Okay, she's in.
Good evening. Jenny Flanagan, you have the floor, and I'm going to mute myself.
I, I just wanted to offer the opportunity to answer any questions that the council may have about these proposed recommendations that the tree commission has put forward. The effort is to try to protect beautiful, large trees that we have around town that are on private property. It's a voluntary program. And I'll answer any questions that the board might have or wait till the next meeting when it's going to be for a first reading.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. I have written, in fact, read the document, but I don't want to make assumptions that the rest of the council has and that they have prepared notes and questions. I think it would probably be best to do that at next month's meeting where we can really get into it and, and tear it apart. Mr. De Sisto?
Yeah, I'm not, look for anything substantive. Of course, I can answer, but I will say this. After review of the ordinance I have for you that has new provisions crafted onto it, they're all lawful. There are no objections on a legal basis, either constitutionally or otherwise.
So they're taking root?
You know, I, I gotta tell you, actually, if you read the ordinance, they really branched out into some areas here that I think are, are very worthy of your consideration.
I can handle them.
I think you should both leave it alone.
I think we should leave it alone until the next meeting.
Where we can really sling the dirt. Okay. So do we have a motion to request a first reading of the amended tree ordinance?
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion by VP Hanley? Was that? Oh, council, I couldn't see her here. And a second by Councilman Kalenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. So Jenny, we will see you next month. Thank you so much. NB3 is discussion and action, action regarding amending permit fees for the building department as required by the state commission. This is a first reading. You all have that document before you. I would ask that Manager Michaud talk to us about it, and then we can entertain some questions that might be out there. So I'm going to mute myself and hand it over to Manager Michaud.
Good evening. As you'll see in your packet through the, the Rhode Island general law, that's included. This state mandated fee schedule has been in place for quite some time, several years. We have successfully applied for extensions of this in the past that we didn't have to upend our whole fee schedule, but unfortunately, we are out of opportunities to extend. And at this point, we really have no choice. We are required to go with the state's calculated fee. The idea is for the fee to be cost revenue neutral so that we would not be losing or gaining revenue through the implication of this fee schedule. It would, it would be, it would be neutral to our existing collections. There are a couple of other, other minor changes that I'm suggesting to the ordinance since we're amending it already. One of them is to eliminate the fee for a first reinspection. As you'll see in the state law, there is a requirement that we are not supposed to be charging for that first reinspection after a failed inspection. So that's been changed. But what I am recommending is for that second reinspection after two failed inspections that we would increase the fee from $30 to $50. And then the other recommendation is to eliminate the $50 completion fee, which is what we charge now. We take the $50 when the permit is issued. And then when the project is complete, we refund I believe 40 of that $50 back to the applicant. We, we keep a, a small portion for administrative fees, but it is, it is a great burden on that office to have to issue all those checks, the requisitions and checks for the return of the fee. And it's, it's, it's a burden for the, for the applicant as well. So this came up during our lean review that we did a couple of years ago as kind of a, an outlier step that isn't entirely necessary at this point. And I'm recommending with the recommendation of the building official that we remove that completion fee from our, from our fee schedule. And then the final amendment that I'm recommending is just a typographical thing. Basically, the reference in our ordinance to the licensing authority for plumbers, we have it listed as the Department of Health, but it's actually the Department of Labor and Training. So just recommending making that very simple change. But again, the meat of the change is, is to eliminate the kind of complicated formula that we have in the ordinances for calculating the, the building permit fees and to replace it with this state mandated fee, which is greatly simplified.
Yeah. I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve that it is mandated by the state. The other changes make a lot of sense. I kind of like I don't have where I work, the final inspection fee, because getting people to call in for final inspections is tough. But, uh, you know, that's, I'll go along with the recommendation of the manager and the building official.
I'll second that.
I have a question first. Kate, on the last page, or page 14 or 15, there's no 15. There's a chart that lists figures from Tiberton, Warren, Warwick, and Westerly. It was kind of hard to read that, but Warren has a proposed fee schedule that is at 13 per thousand, where, which is the highest of those other three communities listed, which are at nine, 10, and seven. Why, why is it different for, for us? Why, why that disparity?
I don't entirely know. That's the answer. I, we've, we've, I think it looks like Mr. Hanley may have a better idea.
Basically, what it is, it's when they first came out with the state fee, every city and town had to account for all the expenses of their building department. You couldn't count zoning. It had to be only the people that actually enforced the building code. Vehicles, gas, so much electricity. And then once you came up with that total number, they took out, you know, they figured out your average of what your value of construction was, and they wanted to zero out. They don't want us to be making money. So that's why some, some cities and towns have a higher cost for their building permits because they have a higher cost for their building department. So that's why they're all different.
Thank you for that. I had a feeling you would know. Are there any other questions before we vote on a moving? This is a first reading. So does that mean we'll get a clean copy next month and have the second meeting or the second reading? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. Okay. Next, Town Manager, you have a few things here. Update regarding rent relief program.
Madam President?
I see that.
Okay, I'm getting, I'm getting a phone call. I have to step away for a minute. Thank you.
All right.
So I, I asked to include an item on the rent relief RI program, just basically as an announcement to the members of the council and the public. And if you can just indulge, I'll just give a brief summary of what rent relief RI is. It's a new statewide rental assistance program, which is administered by Ron Housing. The application period is open now. The program provides rental and utility assistance for eligible residents of the state of Rhode Island. Anyone who's eligible, it's, it's 80% or less of the area median income. So what that works out to is about $69,200 in annual income for a family of four. This is targeted for renters who are struggling to pay rent or utilities as a result of the pandemic. And these renters may qualify for up to 12 months of assistance. The program can pay for rent and utilities owed back to April 1st of 2020, and can also cover up to three months of upcoming rent. Renters may apply for help for utilities, even if they do not need help paying for the rent. So these payments would go directly to the landlord or directly to the utility if the application is approved. So anyone who's interested in finding out more or to apply, the website is rentreliefri.com. And Ron Housing has a dedicated phone line for assistance for applications. That number is 1-800-855-608-8756. We also have this information posted on the town's website. And anyone local who wants some more targeted assistance, who may need help, may not have computer access, they're welcome to also call our social services director, Anne Marie Roy. Her number is 245-7387, and she's well versed in the program and can help people to find their way to, to apply. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that program. And there is $200 million available in the state of Rhode Island. So it is a considerable amount of assistance that's available.
Thank you, Kate, for sharing that with us. Next up is the authorization to begin contract negotiations for the operations, maintenance, and management services for wastewater treatment. As well in your, in your packet, we have some information and Mr. Ruly shared with us the application from one or sent us a memo. So either Mr. Ruly or Ms. Michaud, you want to talk further about this?
Hey, you want me?
I can just introduce quickly, you know, as you know, the Suez contracts for the operations of wastewater treatment facility expires June 30th of this year. So we did put out an RFQ request for qualifications for operations contractors. We had four responses and, and we interviewed three of them. And we would like to put forward to the council that based on the interview and the submissions that we would like to proceed with, with H2O innovations. At this point, since it was an RFQ, the next, the next step would be to negotiate a contract and to then bring that back to the council for approval. So So this is not a final selection. This is requesting permission to proceed with the process with who we have judged to be the most qualified applicant at this point.
Any questions from the council? Hearing none, do we have a motion to authorize the manager and planner to enter into negotiations with H2O?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the manager and the planner to enter into negotiations with H2O to service and run our wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, well, there's three ayes anyway. No opposed. All right, the ayes have it.
Madam President, if I may add, I was just really impressed when I was reading how this H2O operation, they get involved in the community, not only in wastewater treatment plants, but other community programs that they support. So I welcome them coming into our community, and I look forward to it.
Excuse me, Council President?
Yes.
We just lost Councilman Deepa Pasquale. I'm not sure what happened, but when I see him back in the waiting room, I'll let him back in the meeting, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Appreciate that. Keep an eye out for him. Next, we have discussion and action regarding solid waste recycling and yard waste. Again, Ms. Michaud, maybe you want to talk about the grant and the direction we are going in in regard to our solid waste recycling and yard waste program.
Sure. So the first piece of good news is that we are the recipients of a $4,000 grant from Rhode Island Resource Recovery. And the purpose of this grant is to improve our recycling rate. There's three pieces to what we're proposing to do. The first piece is to purchase some additional 95-gallon wheeled recycling totes. And these would be made available. We'll have to, we have not made a final determination on how exactly the distribution of these additional totes would be completed, but this is for our super recyclers, the people who are filling that 95-gallon tote on a regular basis and who have reached out and indicated that they would like to do more. We will also have an enhanced mailer to all our homeowners to continue the education process on how to recycle right. What's recyclable, what's non-recyclable, tips and tricks on that. And then the third piece of it is website content development. The intention is to work with a college student, hopefully to develop some content for our website, maybe something that can be changed up on a regular basis. And of course, it's all going to be consistent with Rhode Island Resource Recovery's rules and regulations regarding recycling. But the intent is that we could make it fun and interesting for people to learn more about that recycling process and to help us to improve our rates. So the second piece of this is the review of our municipal summary, which is provided every year by Rhode Island Resource Recovery. There are some bright spots in that summary, and there are some things that aren't so great. The first thing that isn't so great is that our household trash tonnage, as we've talked about previously, has increased. In 2019, that was 0.81 tons per household, and in 2020, it's 0.85 tons per household. So that's just under a 5% increase in curbside trash. So that's obviously a concern. That means our costs go up, our tipping fees go up, and all the costs associated with that trash disposal, as we've talked about before, goes up. The good news is that our mandatory recycling rate has gone up from 27.1% to 36%. So that takes into account things besides just the curbside recycling, but the other recyclables that are brought to the landfill, to the transfer station. And our overall diversion rate has increased from 27.6% to 36.9%. And again, that's a function of the good work of bringing things to the transfer station, and then the transfer station also doing a good job keeping things orderly and recyclable. One other point that the people of Warren should be very proud of is that the town of Warren in the year 2020 had no rejected recycling loads. This has been a huge problem in some of the other communities that carries a great cost, because when a load of recycling is contaminated with non-recyclable materials, that load is rejected by Rhode Island Resource Recovery. So not only do you have to pay the tipping fee for that entire load as trash, but then you also have to pay a $250 equipment fee as they need to move that load around. And all of the good recyclables in that load get thrown in with the just the regular waste. So it's really good that we did not have any rejected loads in 2020, and the hope is to continue that into the next year. So at this point, what I am preparing to do is, next month at the May meeting, I will be coming back to you with a Rhode Island Resource Recovery contract. It's time for the council to review that contract again. Unfortunately, we don't have an alternative. We're required to dispose of waste of Rhode Island Resource Recovery, so while you have to approve the contract, there really is no alternative. But at that time, I also am going to do a, or have been doing a review of the fee schedule and the policies of the transfer station. And I will have some recommended changes to take effect July 1st that I will present for the council's approval next month. And again, the intent is to reduce the amount of curbside waste or the general trash that goes to the transfer station, and to increase the amount of recyclables, and to make it easier for people to handle the yard waste, because obviously, we have heard some concerns about the yard waste handling, and we do have some recommendations on how to improve that and make it easier for the residents. So that's my plan for next month, and this month is just a basic reporting on status.
Councilman Deepa Pasquale?
Ms. Michu, can we use the grant to buy the compactor municipal bins? The recyclable bins, you know, like around town, the trash bins?
So this particular grant, it's not applicable for this particular grant, but we certainly can keep looking. And we have worked that into the grant that we have for Birds Hill Park includes that. And then we've also talked about putting those in at the Wharf with the funding that we already have for the Wharf. So certainly, it's something that, they're extremely expensive. So obviously, grant funding helps, but we will continue to look out for opportunities on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Michaud. So at this time, there really is no action needed to be taken. Next month, you will come forward with some recommendations, so we can have discussion and action at that time in approving a new contract and looking at fee schedule changes. Am I correct?
Yes, and just I'm presenting recovery grant activities, and if anyone has any objections or any, you know, comments or suggestions, just let me know.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next is Solicitor. Request a motion for executive session, closed session pursuant to RIGL 42-46-5A5, potential litigation, Warren Gateways Project. We will do a roll call now. We will then log out of this Zoom meeting and then log into the link that was provided to us earlier. That is a private meeting. It is executive session, and then we will return and use this same link that you are on now to reenter this meeting once we are done with executive session. Mr. Handley?
This, we're going to finish the meeting and then go to executive session, correct?
Yes, yes.
I will make a motion that we convene in the executive session for potential litigation.
Second.
Okay, so roll call. Councilman Deepa Pasquale?
Aye.
Councilman Heckard?
Aye.
Councilman Kalenda?
Aye.
Vice President Handley?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Eyes have it. Next, we go to Finance Director. Revenues and expenditures. Ms. Chan, are you there? You know what? Councilman Heckard? Did you have a comment?
I just, I just, I don't know if it was only me, but I didn't get the report.
I was just about to say that. I don't believe I did, and I am remiss in not having reached out. So Ms. Chan, the floor is yours, and maybe you can give us a brief summary of where we're at?
Yes, we're nine months through the year, and good thing that we're still on the positive side. However, the surplus is not as bad as before, but we have one more quarter coming in, and we also have some seasonal revenue coming in, like building income should be picking up as the weather gets better. Recreation would be another one, and there are some other revenue that are in arrears, like meal tax, that are two months behind. So hopefully, we'll stay positive till year end.
Two months behind because the state hasn't given us the meals tax yet?
Right.
I think we lost Ms. Chan.
The meals tax is remitted by the state to us, two years, two months in arrears, so they have not caught up yet.
We lost.
So in two months, we will be getting a $25,000 check for the meals revenue from this past month, right?
That depends on the actual activity, so can't really say $25,000 for sure. Can you hear me?
No.
Okay.
Does anybody have questions for Ms. Chan?
Can you just email us the report?
Yes.
Thank you.
I can do that. It's actually, I already scanned it, and it was my fault. I probably didn't scan it to you, but I apologize for that.
So, okay.
Okay, thank you, Fang. We'll move on to planning and community development. We have a referral to the Planning Board for revisions and/or amendments to Article 4, Warren Code of Ordinances Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Mr. Ruli?
This is continuation of what we had discussed at the special meeting, referring it to the Planning Board to make some revisions, and then we'll come back to you.
Mr. Handley?
Yeah, we discussed this. It was a good presentation that we got on this, so I will make a motion that we refer this to the Planning Board for revision to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Eyes have it. And next, we have discussion and authorization for the Arts and Cultural Commission to utilize the outside of the storage building at Birds Hill Park across from the town beach for a community art project. Mr. Ruli, if you want to tell us about that, and yes, in fact, they have worked with the Director of Parks and Recreation.
Yes, and Ms. DeThomas is here, who is the Chair of the Arts and Cultural Commission, so I will give the floor to her.
Great. Hi, Erin.
Hi, thank you so much. Okay, so the Warren Arts and Culture Commission, we've really been trying to come up with a way for the community to come together and collaborate on something in a really COVID-safe way. And the idea that we came up with is to use the white building across from the Warrentown Beach, which is now a lifeguard hut with Parks and Rec, and turn it into an outdoor community art gallery. And so essentially, what this would look like, we would start with the north-facing side of the building and use baton strips to hang wood paneling pieces, or to hang the pieces of art. All of the pieces of art would be done on wood paneling with exterior paint, so that it could weather the elements, and everything would be hung by DPW. What the process would look like is the Warren Arts and Culture Commission would come up with a theme that we really want to work with, and then we'd put out a call for art to everyone in the community, not just people who identify as artists. We would review the, accept the submissions, and then review them, and then, once they're approved, we would provide everybody with all of the materials needed to create their piece of art, which again, is on wood paneling using exterior paint. They would do that at home and then submit it back to us, and then we'd work with DPW to hang it up on the outside of the building.
What a great idea.
Thanks, we're excited. I did meet with Parks and Rec, and they approved it as well, just to let you know.
Ms. Cronin, I have a question for Ms. Michu. Are we going to have that building repainted? Is that in, I mean, the paint is falling off it?
The arts community do all the painting there, why not, right?
It's going to look fantastic.
Actually, when I was at the board meeting, I think they mentioned that it was planned to be repainted sometime this spring, so that would kind of give us a fresh coat. We're thinking the timeline for installation would be in summer sometime.
Is that an official answer, Ms. Michu?
Yeah, I would defer to, Ms. Thibodeau is on the other, as an attendee, I believe there are plans to paint that building, and I'm sure that we can coordinate to make sure that the timing.
I would, I'm just hoping that the schedules would be coordinated. I hate to see it go up and then come down if we were planning on painting it, so that's all. I think it's a great idea. Thank you. I'll make a motion that we authorize the Arts and Cultural Commission to use the outside of the storage building at Birds Hill Park for a community art project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yay, thank you so much. This sounds wonderful. And we do have, next is the Recreation Director, and I'm sure that Ms. Thibodeau will confirm that painting of the exterior of that building will happen before the art is applied to it. So we will make sure that all gets coordinated. Thank you, Ms. DeThomas.
Thank you.
Alrighty, so next we have Recreation Director. Number one is discussion and action regarding awarding concessions rights bids. Ms. Thibodeau, take it away.
So we had one bid come in, and that was for the Palages, so I'm asking the board to approve. It was for $550.
I'm.
$551.
I'll make a motion. We approved the bid from Palages for the concession rights.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Didn't there used to be like a big thing between the Palages and the Dallas people, and now Palages just gets it, eh? I guess. Two, discussion and action regarding Learn to Row Day at Warrentown Beach. So we have an application here from Mr. Singal to do this annual event.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Eyes have it. Three, discussion and action regarding Summer Concert Series contract approval. So we have the information, the bands, the fees, and this is all contingent upon COVID application to the DBR as well.
So this is the, yeah, so we will follow all COVID regulations and plans. And I did have Tony review the movie contracts, so I will make the appropriate changes and send that off to the company, but they were in compliance with those changes. And then the concert series, the contracts already include language COVID-related, because last year, we had organized that, though we did not have the concerts.
Okay, I will make a motion. We approve the contract for the Summer Concert Series.
Second.
I think Tony has a comment.
Mr. Sisto?
Yeah, concert series, the contracts there are fine. On the movie series, I was actually delighted that people that are putting it on took every single one of my recommendations for changes. I was surprised about that, Tara. But before it's sent out, if I could just take a look But before it's sent out, uh if I could just take a look at the revised contract, I'd appreciate it.
That's the one, that's the one for the movies, right? Not this one?
Correct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I I put them both together. My apologies.
Okay.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the um schedule and the contracts for the summer concert series. And that contract in all of this document is in order, so we can vote on this. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Eyes have it. So then the movie uh contract is uh you need to get the final copy of that, get that cleaned up.
My suggested motion is to um approve the contract. Uh with the modifications that have been agreed to by the vendor. And just to subject to final review by the council and Tara can send it out.
Okay, this does not start until July. I do have a quick question. It says uh it's ten or twenty a vehicle. Does that depend on how many people are in the vehicle or the size of the vehicle?
So actually, it was a, I was not sure what I was, I wanted to change. I wanted to get a little bit more. Information from the community to see what they would. What they would um. Find acceptable. So it was, I, we were looking at either ten dollars a car or twenty dollars of a car. Um but it will not be more than that.
You have to be in a car.
You do not, but um it will be through, it, you don't, but um. It's just a different added, you know, it's just different. We're just gonna try something.
I mean, I was just curious if somebody didn't have a car and they wanted to show up and be on a blanket.
Right, and you could have your radio. It's the same thing. You can, it, you'll have to have a radio. There will not be speakers. It will, everything will be streamed through the radio in your car or through a radio that you bring.
All right, good to know. So on the advertising, maybe that could just be added, that's all.
Yes.
Awesome, I think it's a great idea, Tara.
Thank you.
And so the the total cost of sixty five, sixty five, that's sort of a projected. Revenue and that's gonna offset the um the production company and license company costs.
The, we're gonna go out to um the sponsor, similar to what we've done with. And it'll be uh a point eight. Uh effort. If you've sponsored the concert, you're gonna sponsor the movies. So we're hoping to offset all of the costs through the fees to get into the. Into the movie and also through the sponsorships.
Great, it sounds like a fun summer of events all around, so uh. Can, can we have a motion to um approve this contingent upon the solicitor's recommendation? That uh whatever he said, I've now lost my train of thought on Mr. DeSisto's recommendation.
I will make a motion, we approve the contract. Subject to the changes proposed by the solicitor and final review by the solicitor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you very much for your uh work on providing entertainment for the town. Um next, we have Police Chief. Number one is discussion and action requesting approval to relocate, reallocate. Not relocate, reallocate thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars from capital account. Zero one, zero zero eight, zero nine, zero 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 one. And two thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents from capital account zero one, zero zero nine, one zero. Zero 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 eight totaling fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents. To be used to renovate the evidence room. Chief Borges, I see you are here with us.
Yes, good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so well, as. Yes, as all of you know, the old registry uh is no longer there, so after some discussion with the town manager. I asked uh to use the old registry and renovated it into an evidence room. And also into a processing lab um room, which we never had one in our station. So there's some um money uh from oh eight, oh nine. And another account and I'm asking to uh reallocate that money to towards buying um. Some equipment and lockers and stuff and shelves to make that happen.
That sounds like a good use of that space and I'm sure you're enjoying not having um thousands of people through there every, every week. Are the floors gonna get redone in there?
Yes, I've been um, uh we've talked to uh DPW Director, um he had his people there um. Making some walls for us and um we did fix, removed the counters that was there from the registry. And uh we fixed the area where the uh counters were for the floors, but yes.
I'll make a mo- motion, we approve uh. The reallocating funds thirteen thousand two hundred thirty-two. And two thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-four cents from capital accounts. For a total of fifteen thousand five hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-four cents for renovating the evidence room.
I'll second that.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have that. And uh discussion and action requesting approval to accept the proposal from Shanex Technology to upgrade the townwide camera system. Not to exceed the amount of eighty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars funded through capital account. Zero one, zero two, zero two, one, zero zero two eight. And um Shanex is on the master price agreement list. Chief Borges.
Yes, uh last year we had Lieutenant Borges uh do a survey of the townwide camera system. And since then, we've had six cameras that are down. Uh we have not fixed those cameras because. Uh we were thinking of redoing the whole camera system to town and it would cost too much money and the equipment would not be. The same or compatible to it. So this is just not for the police department, but it's also for um. Other town, other places in town that we would like to add uh cameras to uh and supplement those, so um. This is from last year, so we reached out to them and the quote that they have is is gonna, they're gonna. Keep the same quote that they had, that they gave us last year for this year.
I will make a motion. We approve the proposal from Shanex Technology to upgrade, upgrade the camera system. In the amount of eighty-two thousand six hundred and twenty-four dollars.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? The eyes have it. Thank you, Chief Borges.
Thank you, good night.
Alright.
Motion to convene to executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um before we uh. Enter into executive session, three minutes, let's, I have it as nine at nine PM on the dot. Let's uh meet back at nine oh three or you can all sign in if you want, but you won't see me until nine oh three. So log out and log in.
See you in a bit.
Okay.
Hey, Anthony.
Yes.
Dear.
What's that?
You gotta log out.
No.
What?
Chocolate.
You can't eat chocolate.
Hadn't eaten chocolate all night.
It's no good for you.
It is good for me.
How do you figure?
I'll see, I'll see the figure. Look at my girlish media. I'll see executive session.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I didn't think so. Um Mr. Hecker?
No, I'm not opposed.
You can stay. Um good work, folks.
Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Yeah, the next one, good night, Tony, good night, Sammy.
Good night, thank you, thank you.
Good bush.